Good evening. Welcome to this evening's council meeting for Monday, December 12th, the last one of the year 2016. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Stortebum, Councillor Vandenberg. All those in favor? It's unanimous. I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer and with me this evening are my council colleagues. On my right, your left is Councillor Jack Arnold, Councillor Paul Albrecht, Councillor Udi Stortebum, Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Rob Vandenberg, Councillor Nathan Pahal. And at the staff table, we have a -- we're changing around a little bit. We have Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, Carolyn Machada, Manager of Legislative Services, Gerald Minchuck, Director of Development Services and Economic Development. On the other side, my left, your right, we have Francis Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer. Then we have Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment, and Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services. So then we start off with the adoption of the minutes. I need a move on the secondary. Councillors Stortebum, Councillor Arnold, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Motion that the minutes of the public hearing held on December 5th, 2016 be adopted and circulated. Councillor Pahal, Councillor Vandenberg, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Have a look at this side of the table, you see. Yes. First, we have under our delegation, the Rotary Club, and they are going to give us a bit of a presentation on SASSI Awards Langley. So please step up to the mic and help us out.
Good evening. My name is Rod Wainwright and I was the Rotary Club of Langley Sunrise.
And my name is Andrea McCauley and I am also a Rotarian with the Langley Sunrise Club.
SASSI Awards were started about six years ago in Surrey. And SASSI is the -- it stands for Service Above Self, which is the Rotary model, and Student and Youth. So that's where SASSI comes from. It started here in Langley. We put on the first event last year, and this is going to be our second event. And what we do is we recognize youth in our community for their efforts to give back. So leadership in the communities are seven different categories. I think Andrea is going to fill in all the blanks there because I'm too old to remember. And then, and so coming out of the Surrey example, we managed to put together a pretty good show last year. It was at the end of the year, it's an event, like an awards ceremony type of event, where we present six individuals with some trophies and some money.
Do you want me to take a look? Yeah, so last year, we originally started off with seven awards, and we ended up cutting out one just because we lacked on nominations, but that's okay, first year that happens. So in our first year, we had, I believe it was 42 applications. Surrey was in their seventh successful year, and they had 71. So from a comparison standpoint, you know, from a first year running, we did pretty darn good. So those seven awards, because we are doing seven this year, there's community service, environmental leadership, international service, overcoming adversity, arts and culture leadership, sports leadership, and youth leadership. And the premise there is that every single youth that is nominated receives a certificate for their nomination, then, and they are all given those at the VIP event prior to the show the same evening. The three nominee finalists in each category receive another, or a special, I guess, certificate that recognizes them as a finalist. And again, they're presented with that during the VIP ceremony. And then during the award show itself, there are dance performances, musical performances. Last year, we opened up and had an opportunity for the Youth Homelessness Task Force to do a presentation, which was actually a great kind of launching pad for them to kind of get things going with their initiative. And then, so with the awards themselves, the, I guess, recipient of each award receives $1,000 cash, and then they get to give away $500 to a charity of their choice. The two runner-ups, also this year, this is new for us, the two runner-ups are also going to be giving away $500 each to a charity of their choice. So even though they are walking away maybe empty-handed, they are walking away with that sense of doing something good for someone else, which we felt was a great way to kind of build off of what we had, what we'd already been doing. So I don't think there's anything else.
Pretty much it.
That's it. You may be aware, there's an application that's been put forth for a community grant from the city. We've also asked for the same thing from the township because it is involving everyone from all corners of Langley. Yeah.
I guess the other thing is that it's the age group is youth 15 to 21 years old. So it is quite wide-ranging. And this award that we give out, it's really meant to be recognition for some really spectacular young people in our communities. It simply amazes me. I was invited to go to Walnut Grove High School and do, they have, part of their graduation is they have to do a presentation, and so I got to be the guy sitting across the desk. I did it for three years in a row. They never invited me back, but I was simply amazed at the quality of young people in our community. And when this opportunity came about, we thought it was a great idea to get started with. So there's four clubs in Langley's that are involved in this, so the Rotary is 100 percent behind it. Do you need me to talk into that mic? Hopefully that's -- so I'm not, I'm off the record now?
No, never off the record.
I will also mention, I have a hard copy of the sponsorship proposal package, but it will be in all of your email inboxes currently, so if you have questions on that, feel free to shoot me back that way. Do you have any questions now?
Questions? Councillor Vandenberg.
Thank you. I think this is fantastic. How are you guys advertising this? Like, are you going to the schools? Are you contacting, like, RCMP youth units? And is it strictly Langley residents? Or what's the criteria for that?
So the stipulation there is that they, the youth are either living in Langley, or they are attending school in Langley. So that can be post-secondary or high school, that's, yeah. And as for advertising, we have a great relationship with Langley Advance, so with them, we get free advertising that way, which comes in the form of print ad. Last year, there was a couple articles that were in the newspaper and online, obviously, so we've got that access that way. We do a ton of social media, and that will just continuously ramp up. Other than that, directly through the schools, we have a great relationship with the school district and the school district foundation. So all the principals are being reached that way. We did a presentation to the councillors to address some concerns that came up after last year. Did that two or three weeks ago. And we have a meeting set up with the principals to do another presentation with them in the new year. KPU, yeah, KPU's our major sponsor. They're always on board and they help us get this information out. We've been working on TW. It's a, we're working on it. And I'm trying to think, we've polled judges from all corners of Langley and from all different walks of life, so we had people from CJI and from a bunch of different businesses. And so we're pulling from pretty much everything, and this isn't, you know, when we have the judges lined up for that whole nomination process, which is quite intense, I might add, and I personally don't have any hands on that, I'm event only. But we do pull from other areas, not just Rotary, because it is a Rotary event, but we want to make sure that we're not too heavily saturated that way.
Further questions? Councillor Stortebum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and not a question as much as just a compliment. Andrea, Rod, thank you for coming this evening. I too am a proud Rotarian, and I thank you for taking the lead with the SASSI Awards. I attended last year's event and I enjoyed it very much, and I congratulate you for wanting to showcase the talents, the virtues, and the values of these young people, and I would encourage you to move forward with that. And maybe shine a light on the Rotary Act group, too, as a way of identifying that we have room in the Rotary community for young people to be a part of, but all the good things that Rotary is doing. Oh, go ahead.
Just a sidebar to that is that with all of the nominee finalists, last year, they were given a swag bag that had a bunch of information, including information on Rotary Act, Ryla, Yale. For those that don't know, Ryla and Yale are both Rotary-sponsored, ultimately leadership retreats for different age brackets. And we had a couple, we've had, I think, two, two people from SASSI last year that are attending Yale this year because of that. So we're making those connections and we're building off of that, so it's not.
Wonderful. It's nice for our area and people to know that there are choices in the community such as Rotary. Thank you very much. I hope to attend again this year and congratulate you in moving forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So the little information card that you've sent out here is nominations@sassiawardslangley.ca.
Yes.
And is it just for nominations or information is available on that as well?
So there's another email address that's info@sassiwardslangley.ca. I can leave a stack of my business cards as well, so if you want to reach out to me that way. But like I said, you've got my email in your mailbox right now.
Perfect. So info@sassiwardslangley.ca is for some information, and nominations@sassiawardslangley.ca. And as you said on your card, know a dedicated leader in the Langley community, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Next item we have is under Community Spotlight, and Councillor Albrecht and Councillor Vandenberg, I'll leave it in your capable hands.
Oh. I don't know what I --
So we're going to pull over here and make a call. You have to face that way?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Isn't that impersonal? Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and as Chair of the Christmas Parade Committee, it's an honor tonight to give out some awards. We've never done this before, that I'm aware of, and we've actually given out three awards this year. One is a corporate award with Lisa School of Dance. I'm just going to name them off here first. A community award group is the Langley United Youth Soccer Association. And the private award is the Snow Queen, represented by Teresa Ryder. So my co-chair here, Val Vandenberg, is going to help me give out the certificates, the prize, and a gift basket for each winning entry. So let's start off with the Langley United Soccer Association as the Best Community Group Award. I'll get you to come up. So we want to face this way because apparently there's a camera. I don't know if we've got any, if we've got a photographer or anything of that nature. So congratulations.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a chance to participate and see all the youth, see the light, light up.
Great, thank you.
So, yeah, this year was really great because we had really, well, while the weather was so miserable and cold and rainy, it at least, it couldn't dampen the Christmas spirit and that enthusiasm out on the parade route, and seeing all the smiling faces and the parents participating was fantastic. So it was, it was a really great event. Now, I'm not sure who else is here because I didn't get a chance to find them, so I assume the Snow Queen is here? So Teresa?
Of course, I get everything dry.
Dress room, that was fantastic.
Thank you so much.
So thank you for participating.
My pleasure.
And your gift basket, there you go.
Wonderful. Since moving to B.C., you've gotten to work with Make-A-Wish Foundation, a few other groups, S.A.S.A. and different other costumes. It's been really nice.
Fantastic.
Yay, well, thanks.
Thank you. And finally, there's the corporate sponsor here, Lisa School of Dance. No? Okay, so we will make sure that that gets to them, and we'll take a photo so that we can have it advertised. And I just want to take this last final moment to make sure that we recognize that this was all sponsored by, of course, the City of Langley, but more importantly, the Langley Advance. They took care of the judging and the awarding of these, and then the, I think, the preparation of the certificates. And the Downtown Langley Business Association for their contributions to making our parade so successful, and for, of course, all the volunteers and the participants. It was an outstanding event that we truly enjoyed and make the city the place it is. So thank you all.
Yes, it was a very hot night, and I think council had a lot of fun, though. It was, yeah, we always do. So the next item I have is under the Mayor's Report, upcoming meetings. The regular council meeting, the first one is January 16th, 2017. Next one after that is January 30th, and that is 2017. What a year, wow. Next item is Metro Vancouver, Councillor Stortebum.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Metro Vancouver meetings have completed for the year, but at our most recent meeting, the subject of property taxes was introduced in response to recent significant increases in residential real estate values here in the Metro Vancouver area. The Metro Vancouver Regional District is petitioning the province to revise the criteria for property tax grants. As you know, B.C.'s current basic homeowner grant reduces the amount of taxes paid on a primary resident by up to $570 for properties valued at $1.3 million or less. Well, the Real Estate Board of Greater Vancouver now says that the benchmark price for detached home is $1.5 million last month, so B.C. assessment is warning owners that they may see property assessments jump by as much as 50 percent compared to last year. So when you open up your assessments in January, you might be surprised at how much value your principal residence has gained, and as a result, Metro Vancouver is asking for that price point of 1.3 to be raised, to be in keeping with the majority of residential properties in Metro Vancouver. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item we have is Library Happenings, Councillor Martin.
Thank you very much. The City of Langley Library Happenings, first off, is the Food for Fines. Last year's Food for Fines campaign saw Fraser Valley Regional Library customers generously donate thousands of items to local food banks, and in turn, we waived fees, fines. It was so successful that it caught the attention of Global B.C., resulting in an interview with our CEO, Scott Hargrove, on Global's B.C. Morning Show. Fraser Valley Regional Library will once again team up with local food banks in our service areas for our third annual system-wide Food for Fines campaign. Food for Fines is simple. From December the 14th to January the 11th, customers and staff are invited to bring non-perishable food items to any library location and have their fines reduced. So if you've got any overdue books, now's the time to take them back and take a couple of cans of food with you. Christmas crafting will be taking place December the 15th from 3:30 to 4:30. Children of any age can join us at the library for some fantastic Christmas crafting fun. They'll learn to transform ordinary items into snowmen, reindeer, and elves. And Christmas music performance and sing-along will take place on Wednesday, December the 21st, from 2 till 3. Join us in welcoming the First Capital Course Group for an afternoon of singing and Christmas cheer. They are a Langley singing group performing a cappella style, and they will be leading us in some favorite Christmas songs. This event is for all ages, and we'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone in the community. And Essential Skills for Job Success Fridays until December the 16th, from 11:30 till 2:30. This program runs for three hours each week and helps newcomers and Canadian-born adults improve their literacy skills in order to succeed in the workplace. It is free and offered in cooperation with the Langley Literacy Network. Library staff will familiarize participants with library resources and services to relate to literacy and employment, and that's the Library Happenings for December.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. To Rory, who is in the back, our fire chief, would you like to give a little bit of an update at all on the fire? I'm going to put you on the spot. I'm just waiting for him to come up to the mic. As representative of this council, we're very proud of our Langley City Fire Department and the hard work they've just done over this past couple of days. And this is quite unexpected. I happened to see Rory sitting there. He's got some business that he's looking at here, so without further ado, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Another busy day for our fire service, and we spent most of the day trying to come up with strategies in how to help the residents get back into the dwelling units, both at 5650 and 5660, 201A Street. Part of the challenge that faced the reconstruction companies was to separate the, both the hydro and the fire alarm systems in the two buildings. They're actually interconnected. The hydro comes into 5650 and splits off and supplies power to the rest of the building. So they had to separate the power and isolate that, and as well as for the fire alarm system. So they were successful in doing that, and so I'm pleased to report that the restoration company was able to get the occupants back into 5650. That's the 110-suite building on 201A Street. Yesterday, we assisted the residents on the first, second, and third floors of 5650, 201A Street. That's the building where the fire actually occurred. We were able to go in and secure valuables, things like passports, prescriptions, and so on. So just quick in and out to provide them with sort of essentials to get them through the next couple of days. Today, we assisted the people on the fourth floor, and that was a bit more of a challenge because the fourth floor is the area where we had collapse of the roof down into the suite. So we were able to accommodate probably about half the suites. Again, we had to be careful because of the structural damage on the south side of the building. Our efforts also throughout the day were to liaise with the structural engineers to provide stability in the area where we believe the fire has started so we could start an investigation. That investigation will start tomorrow. And also, they wanted to make sure that there was stability in the facade of the building, the face 201A Street, so that tomorrow we could start getting cars out of the underground parkade. So we're progressing along. The emergency management program for both Langley's was out in full force both yesterday and today. The emergency social services team was out, and several of our council members were part of that team, and thank you very much for the work that you did. And we were able to provide housing assistance for upwards of three days courtesy of Emergency Management B.C. So over the next couple of days, we'll be assisting the, those who both had insurance and did not have insurance. Those who have insurance, of course, can liaise with their insurance companies to help them move forward. Those people who did not have insurance, we will be putting together some meetings tomorrow, some resiliency meetings, to try to line them up with the different service groups within the community to help them sort of lay a plan moving forward. So that's our activities over the next couple of days. Again, we will start our investigation tomorrow. The area of origin, or where we believe the area of origin to be for the building, is heavily damaged, so I think that part of our investigation will be actually conducted from elevating lift trucks to get us up into that area.
No, that's great, Rory. Being there yesterday, I know council members were there yesterday. The fire crews did a great job. And what isn't lost in this whole conversation is that you worked so hard, you actually saved the three floors there. I mean, it could have easily, the whole building could have been just wiped out like that, and everything would have been lost to the individuals. Because when, you know, living in an apartment when we first got married, I know when the fire alarm went off, you just kind of went outside and you expected to go back in. How many people kind of thought, okay, the fire alarm's going off, I'm just going to go outside, not expecting that they won't be able to return? And speaking with some of the people that lost, lost just about everything, and a few did lose everything, so it's quite something. And you had help with the, through the assistant program with the township and the City of Surrey, I believe?
That's correct. It was just the township and ourselves.
Oh, yes.
So between the two departments, we had 10 pieces of fire apparatus there and probably about 50 firefighters. And one of the other things that was quite unique is rescue that we were able to make of one individual who did not leave the building when the fire alarm sounded. And so probably about 20 minutes or so into the fire, we noticed a person who was up on the fourth floor. So a couple of firefighters extended a ladder up to the fourth floor, and they went up and entered the suite and were able to assist an elderly gentleman out onto the ladder. And you can appreciate for somebody who is looking down four stories, that's quite a terrifying experience to have someone lift you up and start to pass you out of a window. And at the same time that that was happening, I was on the ground looking up and looking over the firefighter's shoulder who was inside the suite assisting him, and I could see the entire ceiling of that suite being on fire. So that, one of our firefighters was definitely in a little bit of jeopardy there, and fortunately, they were able to sort of quickly get that gentleman moved down the ladder a few feet and allowed the firefighter who was in that suite to bail out of that window and get down safely as well. So we're happy with that.
That's great. I know we have a career fire department, a paid-on-call fire crew as well, so we had both components out from the City of Langley. And we also had the emergency services program, we had the buses there, the RCMP, the ambulance services, and you were kept very busy. I know I tried to ask you a couple of questions, but you were on the go, just like a bunny there. But it is something else to see the crews in action, and could you, on behalf of all of council, say thank you to them? And, you know, even the volunteers that are out there, you know, they've done so much coordinating, you know, they've got their vests on, they ask of nothing, they want nothing, they just go out and help this community. And so, you know, could you ask Ginger to thank them for us as well?
I certainly will.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rory.
Thank you.
One brief question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to personally thank yourself and the Langley Fire Rescue Service. As you know, I am a resident of that strata, and had it not been for the service that the fire crews gave, I'm sure my place would have burned down, too. So I can't thank you enough. I just want to say thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, and as Rory gets to relax a little bit for one evening, there were many people that really stepped up. The Gateway of Hope, I know the Gateway of Hope right now is working in conjunction with the Westminster Credit Union for a fund, you know, to set up a fund there. I know that, and I'll ask Councillor Martin a little bit more in a second on who was involved, but I know that the Cascades Casino Organization stepped forward with 25 rooms right away, over 200 food vouchers. I know the Tim Hortons. I know the Tim Hortons stepped up, the Starbucks in the community stepped up, Savon Food stepped up. And I'll ask Councilor Martin on a couple of the others that she knows of there.
Well, I think you, you pretty well covered. I think London Drugs, they supplied bags with sort of essentials, toothbrush, toothpaste, soap, and stuff like that. I think fifty bags last night. But it was, it was heartening to, to be there and see the people come in. I, you know, the Gateway of Hope brought in a hundred and thirty sandwiches and cookies and Tim Hortons brought lots of soup. There was bananas, there was fruit, there was coffee, there was juice. So, you know, this community, when there is a crisis and people need help, they do step up. And I know that our staff today, and maybe Kim can certainly verify this, were inundated with phone calls looking for people to donate. I think there's been some criticism that some donations were turned away, but there was just not room at the Douglas Rec Center with well over probably a hundred and fifty people there plus volunteers last night. So that's all being arranged, but perhaps Ms. Hilton can, can fill us in on that because I know that she's working. And I guess that's the other thing, you know, aside from the department doing, the fire department doing a wonderful job, which you did, you got lots of hugs today. Our staff stepped up too. I mean, I think Kim was called in, there were several recreation people called in and, and they were there and they, they were there late last night and, and all day today. So maybe Ms. Hilton could fill us in on what's going on in that regard.
Kim.
Thank you worship through the mayor, Councilor Martin. Apart from the financial donations that can be done through Gateway, or sorry, my name is Gaby. Salve, Charlie, thank you. We are working towards other donations. There is a storefront operation in close proximity to where the fire was taking place that's accepting some larger donations, but we don't, just don't have the space for it at the Douglas Recreation Center, which is really the reception center for registrations and information at this time. But I would encourage people to keep their eyes open to our website because our public information officer and communication officer for the city is updating that website all the time. And as we get more infrastructure in place for, to assist these residents, the information will be on the website.
Great. So the City of Langley website will have that information and Samantha will keep that updated as we go along. And Rory, do you want to close it off?
Yeah, thank you very much. There is, I just wanted to mention also that there is some discussion in the local media about building code requirements and, and how that may have affected the outcome of the fire. The current building code does not require sprinklers on balconies and does not require sprinklers in attic spaces. Probably a couple of iterations ago, in the building code, sprinklers were required on balconies. And certainly in a situation like that, we had report of a fire on the fourth floor balcony and so we arrived and confirmed that there was in fact a fire there. Quickly extended a line down the side of the building and from the exterior knocked that fire down. At the same time, we sent a crew up to the fourth floor. And as they moved along, there was smoke in the hallway and they noticed water coming out from underneath one of the door sills into the suite. So they made entry into that suite and just as they started to enter the, the suite, they looked upwards and there's a vaulted ceiling there over the kitchen area and part of that ceiling had come down. And looking up, they saw a well-established fire up in the attic space. So it had very quickly, it appears, started in the balcony area. And the soffits on top of the balcony, there's not a lot, if any, of fire separation between the sort of ceiling of a balcony, say up on the fourth floor, and the attic space. So if you do have a fire on a balcony, it can very quickly get up into the attic space. And with a lot of lightweight truss construction, if you have fairly heavy flame impingement, the structural stability for that truss is between three to five minutes. So that's how quickly these structural pieces can start to fail. And that's one reason why we can't put firefighters in harm's way when we have that sort of volume of fire that are impinging on lightweight truss construction. If the building code were to contain provisions requiring sprinklers for the exterior balconies and/or sprinklers up in attic spaces, we would be having a very different conversation today. So we definitely advocate greater application of sprinklers in, in some of these developments. It certainly would have made a difference for us.
Thank you Rory. So as this council, we can see firsthand and if we want to take our case further, we would have to make a recommendation at this table and then take it to UVCM to take it then to the province. So anyway, just like to thank Rory and the fire department again on behalf of the city and all its residents. And I know there was a couple of firefighters that got treated for smoke inhalation and one got smucked in the face with fire hose or something like that. He, so he went to the hospital, so they're A-OK. But, you know, it's a first responder and again, congratulations on a job well done. And the second item at this time of the year is the Langley Christmas Bureau and they're working very hard these next few days. They, last year, they helped out over seventeen hundred and fifty children, approximately eight hundred families over the three days. And they're, they're hard at it. I know the, the community rallies around them, they get the gifts and the money and, you know, this is, you know, it's a heartwarming community to, to be a part of. So the business end of it is the bylaws. First one we have is bylaw 3002, chauffeur permit regulation bylaw. The motion is first, second, and third reading of the bylaw cited as a chauffeur permit and regulation bylaw 2016 number 3002. I need a mover in the second there. Councilor Albrecht, Councilor Storey-Broom. Is there any kind of a discussion at all? The background on this is a bylaw to provide for the regulation of chauffeurs within the City of Langley and for the issuing of permits to chauffeurs by the officers in charge. So no discussion, all those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Next item we have is the municipal ticket information bylaw. This is bylaw 3010. First, second, and third reading of the bylaw cited as the municipal ticket information system bylaw number 2011, number 2846, amendment number nine. Bylaw 2016, number 3010. I need a mover in the second there. Councilor Martin, Councilor Pahal. Any kind of discussion? All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. And this is the final reading of the bylaw cited as the accommodation tax bylaw 2016, number 3004. And I need a mover in the second there. Councilor Martin, Councilor Vandenberg. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Next one we have is final reading of the bylaw cited as a waterworks regulation bylaw 2004, number 2550, amendment number eighteen, bylaw 2016, number 3007. I need a mover in the second there. Councilor Storey-Broom, Councilor Albrecht. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Final reading of the bylaw cited as the municipal ticket information system bylaw 2011, number 2846, amendment number eight, bylaw 2016, number 3005. Need a mover in the second there. Councilor Arnold, Councilor Albrecht. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. Bylaw 3009. Final reading of the bylaw cited as the sanitary sewer and storm sewer rates and regulation bylaw 2003, number 2494, amendment number fourteen, bylaw 2016, number 3009. Moved by Councilor Vandenberg, Councilor Pahal. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Administrative reports. This is the flag raising policy amendment that City Council adopt, the revised flag raising policy number C033. I need a mover in the second there. Councilor Vandenberg, Councilor Pahal. Is there a discussion at all? Councilor Martin.
Thank you very much. I am going to vote against this amendment and be very clear that we are talking about the flag policy here, not the rainbow flag, but the flag policy. It's my opinion that we do not have to change our flag policy. Part, number four, it says, "Community request to use flag pole must be in writing to the office of the mayor thirty days prior to the requested date." That does not eliminate anybody, it doesn't include anybody, so I think our flag policy covers that. And further, in number seven, it has rainbow flag as a separate clause in this policy. And again, I, I don't think that we should be doing a section for any particular group or whatever, whether it be the rainbow flag, whether it be Ku Klux Klan flag, whatever. I don't think it's necessary. And I also don't think that council should be directing when, when flags are flown and what flags are flown. So I will be voting against this policy.
Further discussion on this at all? Seeing none. All those in favor? Against? Arnold and Martin are against. Next item we have is the, let's see, the creation of task groups guiding principles. And the motion is that the City of Langley repeal the terms of reference for the following committees, Parks, Recreation, and Environment Advisory Committee, the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and that City Council approve the guiding principles for the creation of task groups to address matters related to parks, recreation, environment, public arts and culture, public safety and homelessness, and that the city adopt the terms of reference for the Develop a Sustainable Program to Deter Crime and Target Crime Hotspots Task Force. I need a mover in the second there. Councilor. Whoop. You're moving it, Councilor Vandenberg?
I tried.
Yeah, Councilor Vandenberg. Councilor Storey-Broom. I'll take one from each side. There we go. Is, and is there a discussion at all? What I've got here is a media news release that Langley City has council, Langley City Council has decided to change their approach to address matters related to parks, recreation, environment, public arts and culture, public safety and homelessness. The city has experienced previous success with a number of task groups that were created last year, which includes Braden Lagoon Task Force, Homeless Action Table, Homeless Integration Team, increase number of rent supplements in Langley Task Group, and support integrated intervention approaches in housing and health task groups. These groups successfully achieve specific objectives and accomplish these mandates of the groups. Based on the results from the previous task groups, council is expanding the successful model focused on key matters that affect the city's stakeholders, including residents, business owners, nonprofit organizations, and individuals who have expertise and experience in the subject area to ensure the desired mandates. The City of Langley would like to thank the individuals who have dedicated their time and effort to the Parks, Recreation, and Environment Advisory Committee and the Public Safety Committee and City Council will provide other opportunities for public input. The community engagement is important to Langley City Council and we will continue to seek residents' input through public consultation events such as neighborhood meetings, open houses, and information sessions. The volunteers of this community are the absolute backbone and if there were not for the individuals who give up their time and, and help, you know, basically, there's a lot that this city couldn't get done. We just saw that earlier with, with Rory, our fire chief, with the volunteers that stepped up. And what we're doing now is through open houses and public consultation, we're, we're focusing more on specific areas, not just as a wide brush, but on a single focus area. And this could be on crime, it could be on a park, it could be, well, park, I believe the City Council will be putting a fair amount of time and effort into parks this year. So we'll be targeting parks and we're still going to be targeting a few of the other hot items in the community. So on that, I'll take a, oh, I was going to call a question. All, all those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Sorry Nathan, I, I'll, I'll give you a chance here. Okay. Well, I'm not going to read all of this out. It's motions of, motions of notice of motion that council committee appointments that the following council members be appointed to the committees listed below for the period of January first, 2017 to December 31st, 2017. And there are a lot and as on your paper in front of you. All those, any motion? Councilor Martin, again, or seconded by Councilor Arnold? Any questions? Councilor Martin.
Yeah, I just had one question in regards to the Community Day Parade Subcommittee. Does that mean we're going to have a summer parade this year or is that just in case?
That is just in case.
Okay, thank you.
That's the same thing as Communities in Bloom.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
There's a couple in there, instead of going back to the drawing board, we put it in there. Okay. As per the information you have in front of you here, all those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. The, oh, that's a lot of names. I'm glad I got through that. Yes. Anything further from council members? It's your last kick of the cat. Do you want to say Merry Christmas to Mum Rudy or anything like that, you know?
Merry Christmas, Mum.
Anybody else? Come on Nathan. It's the last one of the year.
Well, then I will wish everyone in the audience a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Right on. So on behalf of Langley City Council and the residents of the city, I hope you have a safe holiday season and we wish you all the best. I need a mover in the second there. Arnold, Arnold and Vandenberg. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. So Merry Christmas, everybody.